To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, infinite and ever, with the deliverance as for all.
Thank you. Good morning. Um, the first thing on our agenda we need to do prior to the consent, and that is a little bit of a shift in some funding. Has to do with the ARP dollars. Um, we are now, we have expended the ARP dollar. Authorization that we'd given in the original five point six million. So the rest of the HVAC system needs to be. Taken out of our twelve million dollar general ARP fund. So I would like approval from the board to start doing that with this newest voucher that's in our consent list today.
So Madam Chair. Second.
It's moved and seconded to begin taking those HVAC funds out of the twelve million dollar general ARP. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. With that, um, we will move on to the consent agenda, and with the consent agenda. I would like to add one thing, and that is a. Uh, support letter for Big Valley Cross Stero Special Improvement District for a slipboard grant. I think you're all familiar with the septic system issue down there. And that documentation needs to be in this week for a current slipboard meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to approve consent agenda as amended.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the consent agenda with the addition. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, now we're pretty close back on time. Our next thing, yeah, next thing will be a public hearing, so we have a couple of minutes until that starts, but if you'd like to come up to the table, that'd be great.
Last one, Kim.
It is, yes.
So does Jenny take over then? So Jenny takes over then?
Yeah.
That easing is like twenty-four hours notice, you know?
A good audience. It's a safe audience.
Depends on where you sit. It's the first one.
You ready, Kim?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, the next thing on our agenda this morning, it's a public hearing for the Boer variance. Um, be presented by Kim Delvin and Jenny with the Park County Planning and Zoning Office.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So the property in question here is in a GRP zoning district, a planning areas Powell. So as you mentioned, the Boers are the applicants. They did submit a variance request in early February of this year. They are planning to, uh, they're, they proposed a three lot minor subdivision. On this property for residential use. And the applicants are requesting a variance from the utility standards in our chapter three, chapter three of our regs. And that requires natural gas to be stubbed to lot lines for any minor subdivision. If gas is available within four hundred feet. So this parcel of the land is within four hundred feet of the M D U utility gas main. And proposed lot one of this subdivision is currently served by M D U. However, gas is not stubbed to propose lots two or three. It is stubbed to lot one. And as an alternative to natural gas, the applicants would like to serve the two lots with propane. And so Madam Chair, on page two of our staff report, we have from our regs, we have the purpose of the variance. Of course, that is to allow flexibility in our regulations. When applications of certain standards are not appropriate, we have applicability of a variance. The board may vary or just the application of any of our regulations. If it would deprive the owner of the reasonable use of their land, buildings. Or structure involved. Procedure for variance, request for variance have to be submitted in writing. We do have an application, so that's been done. And the board shall consider the variance at a public hearing. Of course, this is a public hearing. It has been properly notified. And if you were to approve the variance, of course, you may, you may attach conditions to that. Madam Chair, we did share with you the sketch plan for this proposed three lot minor subdivision. And you can see on the east side of the proposed subdivision is road six. And you see that natural gas does serve proposed lot one, and it does serve the residents on that, on that proposed lot one. I mentioned legal notices were met, two notices were in the Powell Tribune, letters went out to neighbors. And this staff report was shared with you, the board, and with the applicant prior to today. This is a discretionary procedure, so we did notify agencies. We have a list there of, of who we notified, who responded. I'll just mention that M D U did respond with a cost estimate. So our understanding is that they have the ability and the capacity to provide gas service to all the lots in this minor subdivision. And the Park County Treasurer responded saying that taxes are paid in full. Madam Chair, we did get one public comment. We shared that with you. And that property owner, I believe it's a neighboring property owner, was concerned about past and planned uses of this property. And they were concerned that, or they thought that cost was the only obstacle for the Boers. To basically comply with our regulations. So we have on the bottom of page four in our staff report, we have the variance standard or variance approval standards. And there are four, as you know, and the first one is, and these all have, are, need to be met to approve a variance. There are special circumstances or conditions which are peculiar to land building or structure. For which a variance is sought, do not apply generally to land or buildings in the area, and was not resulted from any act of the applicant. The applicant responded by saying the distance is significant to extend, to extend gas. And the cost to complete the work would also be more expensive compared to propane tanks or other sources. And the applicant said other residents to the south are utilizing propane tanks. And the applicant said the existence souls in the area will make it difficult to trench. Our response is there are no special circumstances or conditions which are peculiar to land buildings or structures. For which the variance is sought. The second condition is circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the regs would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of land building or structures. The applicant responded saying that this, this requirement should not apply to the subdivision. Since it would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land. Because she has used an option that is in harmony with the neighboring areas. Again, the applicant said there are a large number of locations in Park County that use propane as their service for this. Our response is there are no circumstances or conditions that cause a strict application. Of the provisions of the regs to deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of land building or structure. We also said there are other uses for the land other than subdividing. And the Brewer Minor Subdivision could proceed to stub natural gas to all the lot lines and be consistent with our regs. However, we did, we did, um, admit. In the middle of page five of our staff report, that there are other sources of energy such as propane electricity that could be utilized. The third condition is granting of the variance is necessary for the reasonable use thereof. The applicant said granting this variance is a reasonable use for this gas service alternative. Our response was granting of the variance is not necessary for the reasonable use of land. We said there are other uses for the land other than subdividing. We also said the Brewer Minor Subdivision. Could be designed to be consistent with our regs, essentially have gas go to each lot line. And then the fourth, the fourth approval standard is granting of the variance is in harmony. With the general purposes intended of the regulations and will not compromise the integrity of the land use plan. The applicant said the variance request is in harmony with the general intent of the regulations and will not compromise the integrity of the land use plan. And they said using propane as an alternative will still, will still serve proposed lots two and three with gas service. We said granting of the variance is not in harmony with the general purposes and, and intent of the regulations. But we did say granting of the variance will not compromise the integrity of the land use plan. And we said we don't believe granting it would be interest to properties in the vicinity. Or otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. Uh, Madam Chair, we have findings. And we do have a recommendation. We feel that not all of the four conditions for granting the variance have been met. So our recommendation is that you deny this variance request. And we're happy to answer questions, should you have any.
Any questions from the board at this time?
Here, Commissioner. One, um, for the. And sometimes the, the, the gas companies don't like to just stub. I mean, is, is M D U willing to stub? To these properties sometimes without a service, you know what I'm saying? In the past, I know we've had those issues. Is there any responses or, and you talked to them about, are they willing to stub one or two and never be used? Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Teal, my understanding is, I don't know if they, if they addressed that specifically in this case, but I know in the past. They're willing to extend a main. A main. And, and the main would be down road six. Okay. But in the past, the gas companies are hesitant to, to stub service to the lot. Until a structure has been built that requires gas. Madam Chair, I understand. Okay, so that clarifies. Yeah, so my understanding. Versus what we have deals with as far as service, because I know they don't like to put a service unless it's going to be used. Okay. Correct. Understood. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Again, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this variance request?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I'll, uh, represent the client, uh, if you guys have any questions. Be willing to answer anything more specific on this.
Okay, nothing at this time?
Madam Chair, move to closing public hearing.
Second.
They moved in second to closing public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
What opposed? Okay, it's a pleasure, the board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm hesitant to, oh, approve a variance for simply to. For cost reasons. Um, they are willing, they're willing to. I think the, the, the lot owner should have options as hard as possible. It doesn't mean he has to hook on to natural gas. He can't put propane. And that's fine for an option. If the developer is willing to. I don't, I'm not sure we've ever done this, and I'm not sure how to do it, but. Put something in on the plat saying this, there's, um, he will pay. For a purchase of a tank installed. Or the building site. But I don't believe that's going to save him any money, in my personal opinion, just simply because. By the time you put two tanks, a tank on each lot for that propane option. Otherwise, he's just pushing the cost of a gas option. To the purchaser of the lots, you follow? And maybe he doesn't want gas at all. Maybe he'll do electricity, but that should be the option of that. Our, our rules and regulations, not that I agree with them, but they are that. And it does fall within this four hundred feet and simply just ask it for a variance to save, uh, you know, twelve thousand dollars in the development. Plus, um, anyway, I, I, I'm, that's my discussion input.
Is that a motion?
No. For discussion.
Um, I, I agree with Fisher too. I think we're likely where with our, our, our telephone regulations when things change, when. Uh, technology changes, then, you know, we can go along with wireless. Um, and technology is changing to, people can live without natural gas. They can do all electric. But as far as our regulations are right now, until we change the regulations, um, some of the. Some of the, uh, the issue just to save money, it just doesn't pass the muster. So that would, uh, I will make a motion to deny the variance. For now, but until we change the regulations, which I heard is coming soon.
Maybe.
Second.
Scott. Um, okay, have a motion and a second to deny the variance as requested. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Okay, variance is denied.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Good luck.
Madam Chair, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to learn how to work with a government agency, so you're gonna be able to.
I believe we can move forward with the next thing on our agenda. Which has to do with opioid settlement funds. Um, just a little bit of a backdrop for the Commissioners. There has been a, a group, um, as you're aware. Looking at this. Project, um, we have received some of the settlement funds, uh, from the lawsuit on the opioid. Um, issues. As that money's come in, there's been discussions on how do we spend it and what's the best way to go. So, um. We had asked. The communities which were required to do in the agreement for the settlement, um, what their thoughts were. So a group kind of got together. And at this point, I'd, I'd say I'd introduce, um, Mayor Hall and Jackie Phels. Both, uh. Kind of jumped in with both feet. Um, yeah, that's fine. And got together with, uh, groups of people, um, Cody Powell, medical, I mean, just got together with a lot of people. And brainstormed areas that we could look at to, uh, to use some of these funds. We've had multiple meetings, uh, with County Attorney, uh, Mr. Skoric. Um, there were many things brought up. We have settled at this point on three things that we'd like to look at and maybe get approved to get started today. There's still some things that we're, we're looking at, um, and doing research on. Uh, one of the questions is if we give this funds out, or if people are looking for these funds, do we have to do an R F P to make sure we're covering everybody? Those are all still some legal questions that we're working through. But in the meantime, there were three things that came up. That kind of jumped out at us. And the first one I will say, I believe is a thousand dollars to. Um, a request from Judge Dara basically for some drug testing materials. So there would be a thousand dollars there to come out of here. And those drug testing materials are used with his programs through the courts. The next was a twelve hundred dollar, uh, a one-year thing for. Our grant recipients, healthy Park County, to work together with other agencies to put together a resource guide for people that are looking for assistance. With opioid addiction, um, and what their options are. If I misstate anything, please, if you guys jump in. And then, um, the last was to. Propose some additional. Positions in our treatment court. And I think in your packets this week, you saw what those costs come out to. I know Mr. Skoric has reviewed. Um, what we are seeing in those costs. So the group determined that, I think the final number was sixty-five thousand four eighty-two sixty-two. Is what we came up with, and that's seven additional drug court positions, which Drug Court believes they could certainly use at this point. So those are the three things that we'd like to move forward today and get permission to go ahead and use those funds for. And then we will be back to you in the future for other options as we move through them. Thoughts?
Um, Madam Chair, my. I'm supportive, uh, as long as we have some kind of wording in there, well, in these funds. Have no way, so everything else.
This is a one to two-year plan.
I understand. I just want that somewhere in there.
Okay. Commissioner?
Madam Chair, can you? Refresh, how much have we got awarded? How much have we received?
Um, somewhere between four hundred and fifty and five hundred. Mr. Skoric, do you know what we actually have on hand? I know it comes in piecemeal.
Yeah. I think we're sitting around five hundred. It slowly circles one. My understanding is the big amounts paper off, then it comes in maybe sixty-five, seventy a year for the next ten years.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, for Mr. Skoric, um, you support these seventeen positions?
Well, there are seven additional positions. They say they have the need, that's not something I can verify. Those, because the, the Drug Court clients, I guess, are not there, and I assume the money's returned. Now, there's only five negative returns that I wish.
Any other questions, thoughts? Okay, it's a pleasure of the board.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
What was the, the amount, sixty?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand four eighty-two sixty-two for the Drug Court positions. And then additional twelve hundred and additional thousand for the other two issues.
I'll say.
I assume we're discussing before the vote, and then I don't have it, I can't find where it specifically has a sunset as if on the funds for these positions. I just want to ensure that that isn't.
We could put that in the approval letter that goes to Drug Court. We know that we were limiting this to a year at a time and looking at things, and that was the. The gist of the conversation.
It has to be renewed every year.
As the funds are available, yes.
Okay, I'm okay.
This is just for the seven positions right now.
Right now.
Okay, it's not, that's my understanding. It's not continual, it's just at a time.
That's what it's worth.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to post? Okay, thank you. We will get started and figuring out.
Thank you, Commissioner Orfield, for having us here today.
Yeah.
It was nice to not have to say anything, but I can't help myself.
Yeah.
I will say this, though, for Commissioner Stewart's. Uh, Jackie's the interim director for Drug Court, so if you had any other kind of thoughts on those specifics, I'm sure she could. Help you out offline.
Yeah, appreciate it, thanks.
No, and thank you all for the time, and we're not done putting in time on this, but at least we're, we're moving forward. So, thank you, Mr. Skoric. All right. Yeah, he's here, so I guess. Yeah. Clay, you want to come up? We're gonna go a little bit early. I'm Clay Nelson, Operation Supervisor, Yellowstone Regional Airport, temporary road closure request.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this year marks the, uh, the thirty-six month, uh, triennial requirement for Yellowstone Regional Airport to basically host our full-scale emergency exercise. Um, it's required by the FAA. Uh, we are part one thirty-nine, certificated airport, airport, which allows us to provide commercial service, um, out of, out of the airport. Uh, one of the requirements that the FAA does, um. Does require of us is that we host, um, this full-size exercise, uh, full-scale exercise every, once every thirty-six months. This year, we, we've elected to essentially move the exercise from the actual airfield inside of our perimeter fence. And utilize an area outside the perimeter fence on Beacon Hill, um, for this exercise. And so what we're requesting would be a temporary road closure for two hours, uh, from approximately nine AM to eleven AM on May eighteenth. Um, so that we can ensure that we have, uh, safe ingress and egress of emergency vehicles, fire trucks, EMS, search and rescue, um. And, you know, of course, Beacon Hill is, is controlled, part of it's by the county, part of it's by the city, so, which is why I'm, I'm here in front of you all. Um, the, the county portion is basically from, uh, the intersection of Highway fourteen A, runs around the end of our airfield, past two D A W, and then kind of terminates right there somewhere, and so. Um, we're, we're requesting to, to close that entire section of road, basically from fourteen sixteen twenty to Highway fourteen A. And then Eddie Sheridan, um, right there as well. So, um, that's, that's what we're looking for, uh, permission from you all. Um, for that day, for those approximate times. I can sure answer any questions.
Yeah, Clay, is there any, um, uh, plan maybe to, to sign that in advance to let people know that it's gonna be closed?
Absolutely, yeah, we're, so. We're going to do everything we can as far as, uh, getting the word out, uh, newspaper, social media, on the radio. And then we're also working with wide out in the county to actually put up some, some of the electric or, um, big display signs on the sides of the highways so that everyone knows what's going on there, so.
Prior to and during the exercise.
Correct, yes, correct.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, Madam Chair, along those, I did, um. That's kind of what my thoughts were, was, uh, getting the public plenty of notice and in your paper advertisement that will be at your expense.
Correct, absolutely.
Because we should, uh, okay.
Yes.
And I, I will just say that Commissioner Stewart is sitting on this committee. I went to the first meeting, just because he was out of town, but he'll be taking over, so we'll be kept apprised of what's happening.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair. I move to approve the temporary closure for the training for, uh, making hill road, road. Three X, three S.
Three.
Three C X.
That's what it is, yeah.
Uh, for, uh, Yellowstone Regional Airport Training.
I have a motion and a second to approve the temporary road closure request. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to post?
What, what date is that?
May eighteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks. We have a few minute break till we have a, a board interview at ten fifteen. We'll take a quick break.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I will. I will announce that I will be setting out on the Predator Board interviews due to conflict.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Raised in Clark, raised on a farm and ranch out in Clark, as you guys know. Um, and been involved in around um. Wilderness and 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 what makes Wyoming great, uh not also also involved and and saw the importance of livestock. And and what role they play in in the state of Wyoming and and that balance we have to maintain with. The nature that also makes Wyoming beautiful. Um initially, you know, my my initial thought was uh to help keep Wyoming Wyoming. Um, you know, and and to me Wyoming is um two great things and it's it's livestock, mostly cattleman. Um, but but other types of of livestock horses and 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 cheap um pigs, but then it's also. The the wild nature, um which as a as a college student, I studied biology. So I have a BS in biology with an emphasis in education. Um, and I taught high school science, biology, as well as environmental science for for three years. So um. You know, I I I've learned very quickly as a teacher, um you know something and you all know stuff. But you don't truly know it and understand it. Until you have to teach it to others and until you have to teach it to two hundred others. Um, I feel like that kind of helps you get a a unique um perspective that not everybody who just grows up and and experiences it. Um, gets and so um a combination of those teaching um all of the um. Eco- ecological balances that you have to maintain within a healthy ecosystem. Um, all the way down from the producers, all the way up to your, what we're talking about tertiary uh consumers, you know, our predators. And and that very delicate balance um that that we have of a of an ecological pyramid. And and as I said, um, not only did I teach that for many years, um, that was my favorite thing to teach about the environmental sciences. Was was um just how all the ecosystems work together and and how there is a balance. So um. You know, as I said, I've I've taught students, I've worked with models and and seen how um all all the things play out and and would love to. Also be now boots on the ground is is some experience um and and helping to assist the the predator board however I can. Um, and in in their mission. Um.
Um, guess we might have a few questions for you. I'll start with one, and that is some board work. Have you done other? Or have you been on other boards or done board work?
Um, I I I am young and and my board work is not extensive. Um, I have been on and and don't laugh at me here. Was on student council uh ever since the beginning, fifth grade when you could initially run. Um, I was I was there treasurer and and stayed on all the way through until I graduated high school. So. Uh, you have some experience in 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 that aspect. Um, as I also stated in my letter, I am also a. Uh, during my time as a teacher, I was an assistant coach. I have been a position coach. I've been a coordinator. Um, just recently, I was also a college level coach, so not necessarily working on boards. But managing teams, working with many different people. Um, while I was also a high school teacher, I was the head. Uh, get this head coach for the Science Olympiad team, which if you've never done this or heard of it. It is the coolest stuff in the world. I had never heard of it until they asked me to be the coach of it. But but the the things we're talking about is competitions where it was called Wright Brothers. So you literally had to make a plane. Out of, you could use any materials except for motors. So you basically had to recreate. The the Wright Brothers planes and and the the competition, how you won was not the distance that you flew. But it was the total flight time. So like winners fl- planes would sit there and spin around and around. You'd do it in a gym. And then, you know, the next one would be um, the next type of competition was uh geology rocks. And so they'd have a whole bunch of different type of rocks and students would have to identify them, um, how they're how they were created, different things. All the way up to protein building. I'm talking, guys, th- these students were building proteins and being able to identify. Oh, that's the protein for, oh, I don't know, muscles versus that's a protein that's received in your brain. And if you get that, you're you're rich. It's susceptible to cancer now. Like, I'm like, what are you guys? This genius level work, you know? And so anyways, through that, I I did have to fundraise. I had to uh go to the board. I we had to write a constitution. We had to come up with. Um, you know, the whole system, we had to elect a president, we had to have vice presidents, you know, and and I had to be the one that ran all that. And so. Uh, it took and built off of my uh student council experience to now kind of be the one behind the scenes of like, hey, this is what we have to do and this is why it's important. And uh, we had to fundraise every year. Uh, there was entry fees for the teams, you know, so we did have to come up with our own fundraising activities. Uh, we had to make sure that applied through and and made it through the right channels and hoops within the state and and then all the the fundraising areas. So. Um, that's kind of the extent of my board work. So like I said, it's it's not deep, but it is kind of broad and does have some different areas.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Zach, if you have the sanity duty, would you still be able to help your handicapped father with the tapping season?
Yes, yes. Um, I fully intend uh to be able to help out in 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 all my other duties uh that that I'm doing. Uh, whether it be uh helping out um through my father's endeavors. And and uh also with this, I don't have any livestock myself. I help maintain and 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 more of a ranch hand, but I don't personally own any. Um, and and uh I am more of a just true outdoorsman. Um, but yes, I'd be able to still do all my stuff, my weekly hikes. My uh, my my uh, um, dirt work, digging, digging, you know, dirt out of the ground, moving it from one place to another. And spreading it around. Uh, yes.
He's found cheap labor, I think.
Yeah, 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 he did find some cheap.
I bet your dad's cheap.
Yeah, Zach, what what is your idea uh of the duties of this predator board?
Uh, so my uh, uh, my ideas of the duties of the, are you talking the whole predator board or my position and and myself?
What what, how the predator, what the predator board's duties are?
Okay, okay. So so the predator board is is general, from my understanding is they're there to help work with. Um, again, like I said, the two entities that make Wyoming great, the the livestock owners of the state. And those that rely on um nature to help make a living and and feed everyone, but also the the ecological balance. So their board is to try to help balance the two and make sure um ecosystems don't. Aren't hurt or um thought of as a means to an end. But they are there to help assist um the livestock and the livestock community. And and to help them work in in unison is is one um uh together. And so, you know, that that would be a thing of. Could could look like helping ma- uh monitor predators. Uh, that's one thing that I really I really liked to bring to my students' interest. Uh, when we would use models and stuff is, say, yeah, let's put a whole bunch of wolves in there. Let's let's put a whole bunch of, you know, apex predators in there. Um, and and see how does that affect your ecosystem and and kind of the balance. And so. Um, you know, really showing them and trying to get them to envision. I was always a a visual learner. My uh parents always said, what do I got to do? Draw a picture for you? Like, yeah, that would really help. Um, but to me, seeing the the true pyramid, and if we all imagine, you know, the the pyramids in Egypt. The base is the biggest widest part, right? And that has to be filled with your producers. And as you move up, you then it has to be filled with your primary consumers. Which is what we're talking about with our livestock, but then also having enough deer and animal natural primary consumers to then feed. Our tertiary consumers, but also it gets smaller as you get towards the top, right? So you can't have too many predators. Cause now they're gonna then undermine the bottom part of the pyramid and the whole thing's gonna fall over and collapse. So so my my envision is the job of the predator board. Is to help maintain this pyramid balance of our ecological wilderness while also maintaining a balance for. Um, all those that rely on livestock as a way of life in Wyoming.
Nope, I don't have any thanks for buying.
Yeah, awesome.
Any other questions? And do you have any questions for us?
Oh, man, I know I should. Uh, when would I hear back?
Today.
Today? Okay, awesome, cool. I got one question in. I know I should always have one, so uh that that works for me, so.
We'll make a decision sometime today.
Okay, cool. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
All right. Um, in a few minutes, we will do another interview, but it happens to be for the Park County Travel Council. We will be interviewing two for that position today, and there is one incumbent who we won't be interviewing, and that is um John. There happens to be a pretty cool article this month in the Bugle magazine about Wes Livingston. So. Help trapping, but anyway. So do we need to uh go back online, Molly?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we will be interviewing for a position on the Park County Travel Council. There is one position open. There is one incumbent, and we don't normally interview incumbents, but we do have two other interviews today. This first one is with Craig Kenyon. If I said that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So we'd like to get started. If you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the position.
Uh, Craig Kenyon, uh, owning the dark mountain lodge, uh, going into my sixth season. Hard to believe, it's a true blessing. Uh. A lo- local, uh, graduated from Powell High School, uh, always had a. My heart has always been here. That's why I'm back here. It's why I live here. Uh, after a short. Twenty-one year break, trying to decide what I wanted to do when I grew up, I retired from the Air Force and moved back in this area. And uh pretty much have been here every since, uh, just a passion, true passion for the for the area. I don't think there's a safer place. Uh, that you can live than up here. I've seen some unsafe places, uh, and I really feel. That this area is is great for raising families, making a living. Anything you need to do as far as arriving, you can do it here. Uh, reason I'm interested in the position is, uh, I enjoy helping other people. I believe I would be a true asset to the Park County Travel Council. As far as as assisting in allocating the the funding, the tax dollars that we bring in here. Uh, we've done, I'm also the vice president of the East Yellowstone Valley Chamber. We've done some great things up there, the opportunity to help others achieve that. Uh, we know what works, what doesn't work. Uh, we have hit those, don't do that agains, and maybe we should try this. So my true uh goal, mission would be not only to to ensure the funds are getting allocated correctly. That they're going to people that understand what they're for, how to use them. And how to bring those folks into Park County here. We have a wonderful part, uh, literally a corner of the world. Here in Park County, and there is so much to do. And it it's getting more and more expensive to advertise, to to uh get our our names and our businesses out there. Uh, like I said, being able to help people and where to use those funds, uh. I believe would be one of my main missions is to help others. And uh make sure that we're we're taking a good deep look where this is going, what it's doing, what's working, what's not working. And move forward.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, just kind of a general question on board work. You mentioned that you're on the the East. Eight board or council. Have you done other work, uh, board work, understanding the nuances of board work?
Oh, most definitely. I I was uh for a period of time, the executive director at the Palachamber Commerce. So I've worked with that board. Um, when I was with Wyoming Financial. I was on the panel with Liberty Mutual to rewrite the Farm and Ranch Ball C. Uh, not really a board, but we did have to present. So um, so those are. Are the probably the extent outside of twenty-one years of answering to somebody else in the military. That would be be the be the extent of it, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for applying, Greg. Um. And this isn't a trick question, and if you don't have a really a good answer, but given the the. We've been getting extra funding in here in the Park County Travel Council. Do you think that they're headed in the right direction with that funding? Do you have any thoughts of where, how it could be? You know, used to spend differently?
So as far as uh I think it's great that we're get we're getting the extra funding. They did raise the. Uh, the amounts there a little bit. Uh, I think Ryan's doing a great job over there. We meet with him. Uh, every once in a while, just to kind of discuss and ping pong ideas off each other. So as far as the the funding goes, um, yeah, I I would say most definitely, sir, that we're. We're headed in the right direction. I believe that uh we need to keep going in the right direction. That's so hard to find anymore. Uh, because advertising is, it changes uh. From one year to another. We do something this year, it's gonna be totally different next year when we look at it. So keeping up with those, being able to to look at what's coming, as well as what we have and what we're doing now. Being able to kind of take a peek into the future here a little bit's important. And I think that's something we definitely, as a board, would need to keep our eye on. Of what's coming.
Thank you.
Questions?
Um, Madam Chair, I'm Craig. Thanks for applying. I'm I've sitting here debating whether I should say anything or not. Uh, appreciate you applying, but I've known Craig for a long time, and that might be a negative for his defense of weather. But played football with him about forty-five years ago.
Um, that's hard to believe as well.
If you understand how to administer the funds, I can tell you, you should be in Cheyenne right now. But I really don't have any questions, and uh I think you bring some really good uh, good ideas and and maybe a different perspective and. And a flexibility on on uh on on the promotion. So, good luck.
Certainly, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Kenyon, I I see you bring a lot of expertise, I mean, in this field, and I I think your passions are. And I'm gonna flip the coin, and how do you how do you respond to the person that says you're probably in this for your own personal gain? And I don't feel that. I'm just saying, how would you respond that?
If I if I told you that wasn't a question I didn't think about?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a pretty good question. Uh, it's it's not about me.
Sure.
When you're on a panel board, it's not about you. Uh, there's nothing I can do. On on the board that will will be just for me. There's there's other people. Uh, there's other board members. So it's a collaborative. What can we do to help everybody? Uh, I would like to gauge our success at the East Yellowstone Valley Chamber. I would like to take that success, as I said earlier, and help others. They explore, this is what we're doing. Share those ideas. And and that may help somebody, it may not. Somebody else might have a great idea. Try this. So so no, personal gain has to go to the to the wayside. There is no. Uh, like I said, there's there's nothing you could do, I don't believe, anyway. Um, so if you're here for that reason, I I shouldn't be here if that was the case.
Sure.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Right, just first. Advertising is expensive, except for radio, so just.
You in this for yourself?
Did you? I would I would love to come do a morning show, Scott, sure.
Do you do, I guess, I suppose you almost have to do surveys with the guests that are at the lodge. Where they come from. Do you also share that information with the other lodge owners up there, and do they share with you?
Yes, sir. We we sure do. It's one thing, uh, when I started up there, uh, six years ago. Five years ago. Uh, one thing I noticed is how, how it is like a family. And how, when I got on to the 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 chamber board up there. One of my missions there was to bring everybody together. We all have to work together. And share those ideas, because we advertise as one. We advertise as East Yellowstone Valley Lodges. And with with that, that's helping everybody that that's a member of our chamber up there. Advertise, get the word out. There's there's no, uh, I'm on the. I'm the vice president of the East Yellowstone Valley Chamber, so therefore I get more advertising than anybody else. There's none of that. It's a shared collaborative cooperative event. So yes, sharing those ideas with other. Uh, uh, ranches, lodges is, you have to. And this is what's working for us. We show them what we're doing, our analytics that come in from the. The um Cloud Nine that we use over in Jackson. Uh, we share that with everybody. That's how we present. Uh, your members, uh, and one thing, being a chamber, um, board director, whatever you want to call it. Your your membership is, what's in it for me? What do I get out of this? And so we show them, and that was one important fact I brought to the East Yellowstone Valley Chamber is, we have to show them what we're doing. We have to show them the bang for their buck. Because otherwise, you we can't can't do anything with it, or we can't not do anything with it. We have to show those analytics. And those analytics are are getting better and better. Uh, the places we go, we cut out, we add. So so yeah, it's important to share that information and not just with our chamber. Uh, as I said earlier, I would want to bring that this is what's working for us attitude and share that with with everyone within in the county.
Any other questions, sir? Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, I don't really. Um, I just fall at your mercy, I suppose.
Okay, well, we appreciate you applying. Thank you. Um, we should know by the end of the day.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Take care. We're on kind of an elongated break. The next thing is eleven o'clock. Okay.
I was not broadcasting football when Lloyd and Craig were playing.
Commissioner Teal is excusing himself due to a conflict, so it'll just be the four of us. Are we ready? Everybody up? Colleen, ready? Okay. So the next thing on our agenda, um, Park County Predator Board interview, Greg Maithen.
Correct.
Okay, appreciate that. Um, first thing, if you'd like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are interested in being on the Predator Board.
You betcha, um, we're super active in the community, been in. Park County since two thousand eight, moved out here, straight out of college and. Uh, love fishing, hunting, trapping. Uh, worked for the game and fish off and on for fourteen years, now I've been with the school district for four. Love, like I said, outdoors, fishing, hunting, everything I can do to get out there. Um, on the dam board right now, been on the dam board for the Buffalo Bill Dam Board. Been on the board for close to, gosh, four, six, four to six years. I think we've been two to three terms. Uh, enjoy it, uh, and I think this would be a great opportunity for me with my background as biology and. Knowing the county and working in sporting goods field and trapping and knowing a bunch of people in the, in the county.
Um, you just said you are a current member of a board.
Correct.
Um, have you been on other boards, um, dealt with finances on boards and those types of things?
So I'm the current treasurer of the, uh, Buffalo Bill Dam Board, um. Uh, I was on, uh, I'm trying to think even what it was called. It was the Park County. When we're looking at, uh. It's been several years back. I think it was a whole new, uh, commissioner back then, uh. When we're looking at, uh, the wilderness study areas. So it's that through that whole project. Yeah, yeah, so. Yep, been, been a while. I was on that. I was second chair on that, sat through all that whole committee, uh. Uh, with the finances, with the dam board, we, you know, have a pretty decent budget, keep everything up and going. So I would think that would probably the, the biggest financial aspect that I've had in a public setting would be working with the Buffalo Bill Dam Board.
Okay, thank you. Questions for other commissioners?
Um, two-part question here. Um. What is your motivation for wanting to get on the board and what do you feel the, the, the job of that predator board is?
I guess my biggest thing is that we keep people on these boards that are active in the community. Uh, have a stake in, uh, wildlife, hunting, fishing, make sure that we keep everything. I guess going the way it has in the, in the past. So I guess the biggest thing is that we have people that are tied to the community. Uh, have a good working knowledge of what goes on in the county, using biology, biological, working with the different departments, you know, state, federal, local. And, uh, making sure that we keep the wildlife around like we've had for hundreds of years.
Maybe I'm learning more about Predator Board. If I'm a livestock producer, I'm probably gonna be lobbying the Predator Board, right?
Correct. So I've had some, uh, friends that have been on it before and it seems like. I guess what I've run into it and what I've, uh, researched is that you're pretty much, uh, working with the budget to, it's for the, the trappers. All that, the Predator Board, raccoons, foxes, skunks, uh, wolves in the, in the predator zone. Uh, so we don't have any mitigation with sheep, wolf, or sheep and livestock producers.
With Matt, you're just pointing, just to. For your, uh, your question. A lot of the funding for the Predator Board also comes from brand inspections on all transfers of livestock, so that. The livestock producers support the Predator Board to a large extent.
Any other questions? Not at this time? Seeing none. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, so it didn't state if it was, I know there's different positions for the board, if it was an, uh, like. They have a sportsman's position and then like an outright county representative.
At large.
It's okay.
What is it, is it, are we pointing the sports? I think it was pointing the sports, right?
That's my understanding of the conversation when we did the advertising, but.
That was just double checking.
Means you have to have a hunting license or a fishing license.
Lifetime, everything. So, and yeah, super active, uh, sporting goods. I've worked at Rocky Mountain Sports since two thousand eight off and on. We deal with the, the predator, like yesterday, worked last night and had to go out and flip some nails for, uh, the. Wyoming outdoorsman. Stuff yesterday, so I've been trapping my whole life. I know how everything works biologically. I have a, a fisheries biology degree from Iowa State. And worked with the several different departments throughout the, throughout the county and throughout the state.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I don't have anything else. Um, we expect to make a decision sometime later today. So you'll be notified with that. So, all right. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for applying.
Appreciate the time today.
All right.
Yes, enjoy the new meetings.
Thanks. Yeah, for now. Hopefully we'll be back in our home. You can switch this.
You want to do that point, but no?
Um, we could. There's only the two on Predator Board. Um, yeah, I can't really do it here.
Yeah, so I guess, um, where I'm at, Madam Chair on this is. I think both of them are good, uh, good candidates for it. I kind of. You know, all the, the familiar tie aside, I kind of think it'd be nice to get someone like Zach into the. You know, into, onto the end of the, end of the community doing stuff like that. With that, Greg is, has been on the dam board. He was on Whitley. He's pretty well invested in the lot and. I guess my thoughts were just. Gives, uh, gives you an opportunity to get some new blood.
Sure. Anybody else to thought the Predator Board?
Is this, is there like coming in this?
No.
Okay.
No, just between these.
Yeah, I mean, they each bring their own attribute, um, with the, with the fisheries and biology, just all that, but then you also have the, the, the other aspect of it. I, I'm just, I lean towards that.
We need, you have more discussion?
Well, I've, I've known Zach.
Really?
Definitely, uh, certainly would favor his ass.
Madam Chair, make motion with point Zach Field to the Predator Board, the sportsman's position.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve Zach Field to the Park County Predator Board. Any further discussion on the motion?
I can tell you the meetings will be longer with Zach because he does spend the cap.
Any further discussion on the motion? Carrying down all those in favor? Okay, motion passes. Okay, so Molly will take care of that notification. Thank you. And. Anne, do you have anybody else coming?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Let me see if the, is Jake here? Okay. Okay, we do have one more interview, Anne, before. Um, no, but we need to find him. He's coming. Hi, Jake.
How are you guys?
Good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Uh, I get that.
I gotta get that every time I say him.
I get that once a week at least.
Oh, I saw, yeah, did he go back to the archives? I did. Do you want to check the archives and see if he's back there? Cause I did see him walk that way.
Talk about wine backs.
Let's check you out.
You could have just ducked in that door.
Yeah.
No, because I scared you.
Yeah.
He scared me and I scared you. I'm sure of it.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is, um, another interview for a position on the Park County Travel Council. And the interviewee is Jake Ivanoff. So if you would like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on a travel council.
Sure, um, well, my name is Jake Ivanoff. I was born and raised in Cody. Um. Went to, uh, to school in Powell for a second and then went to University of Wyoming, graduated. University of Wyoming in two thousand seven. Um, got interested in real estate, two thousand seven, and moved back here. Um, started my real estate career really young here, um, so I had to learn pretty quick and, uh, learn how to do things right. Um, the one thing that I learned, uh, about real estate, it's a great, it's a great, uh, living, but. It's also up and down, so investing is something that I've been heavily doing as much as I possibly can. Uh, two of my main places I invest is downtown Cody and downtown Powell. Um. Obviously, I'm in the, I'm in the hospitality business. Uh, we bought the Scout Inn, um. Oh, in twenty twenty-one, um, kind of at the. Wrong time to be buying a hotel, but it somehow turned out to be the right time. Cause we had a pretty good year and then obviously twenty twenty-two happened and with the floods on June thirteenth, um, that wasn't fun and that's kinda. Where I realized how important the Park County Travel Council was to us. Um. I've been following Park County Travel Council ever since. Um, I've been, you know, having a building over in Powell as well. We have a. Um, building over there that we have redone, seven thousand square feet right on Main Street, across the street from Ace Hardware.
Um.
We've added a restaurant in there and I think fourteen separate businesses have been able to move in there and had affordable rent. In on Main Street, which in turn is helping the Main Street, helping the, um. The restaurants, um, and, uh, the, uh, uh, just everything on Main Street there. Um, but yeah, being part of, of Park County or watching the, um, Park County Travel Council, I've really kind of learned. How important it is and how vital it is to, um. Into my line of work and my business. Um, I also own three oh seven real estate in town. Um, where we have offices, we have an office in downtown Cody, downtown Powell and downtown Sheridan. Um. I really, uh. Um, I'd like to be active in the community, uh, whether it's Cody, Powell and Sheridan. Um, and I just would really like a shot at being on the Park County Travel Council.
Thank you. Can you give us a little history of board work that you have done in the past and whether that's, you know, what kind of boards and any financial? You know, working with finances and that type of thing on boards?
Sure, um. Sure, um, I was on the um. Oh man, I don't even remember what year is, pretty early, I think it was two thousand eight, I was on uh, planning and zoning. And I did a term there and then after planning and zoning, I went to um. The uh, Park and Rec Board, uh, or the Shoshone Rec Board. I was on the Shoshone Rec Board for two terms, um, total of ten years. Um, that was a uh, a very fun and rewarding board to be on. I sat with Dossie for quite some time there. Uh, I think she's done fifteen there. Um, learned a lot from Dossie on that board, uh, but just learned a lot about how the community works as well. Um, I've also been on the board of the um, the um, Realtor, the, the Northwest Wyoming Realtor Board. Um, I've been president three times of that, on that board. Um, obviously, our budget on that board is um. There's a lot, there's a lot going on with that board. We take in uh, almost two hundred. Due dues yearly from all the other agents, there's about two hundred agents in, in Northwest Wyoming. And uh, we have to distribute those, we have to pay rents, um, we have to pay staff. Um, yeah, it's a, that's, it's a board, uh, as far as money goes, we've uh. We've been heavily involved in budgeting on that. Uh, nothing compares to the budget that I've learned about when, when holding or when owning a hotel though. And uh, what kind of soap you buy is a big difference.
Okay. Um, questions from other commissioners?
Uh, thanks for applying Jake. The, if you've been following the Park County Travel Council, there's quite a bit of new money that's been flowing into there. Um, are you, do you, what do you see about that? Is it heading in the right direction? Is that? Do you have any thoughts about how anything you might change or just get in there and see how things go and then figure it out?
Well, um, I think that there's, I've been in, owning a real estate company is like basically, and it always has been, it's nothing new. It's a marketing company, that's all we are. Um, we get calls every day from people saying, we wanna geo-fence this and. We wanna buy AdWords here and we wanna backdoor this and we wanna be big brother here and. I hear that a lot and I've seen a lot of people do a really good job of that and I've seen a lot of people do a bad job of that. Um, I think that we could be doing better at that. Um, I think that the travel council um. Is, and, and again, it's something that I would like to get on the board and, and uh. And see how it goes, obviously, I'm not just gonna go start throwing darts in the first, the first month. I'm not afraid to. Um, Dossie knows, she's, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm outspoken and, and I will say what I have to say. But uh, um, I would like to get in there and really see where our money's spent and how it's spent. And I'd like to question some of that as well. Um, I will question that um, as well. I think that's the whole point of putting new people on the board. A, might be an opportunity where I learn and I can say, oh, okay, I, I can, I can see why we need to do that and I really hope that's the case. But uh, but I will be asking questions and I will be um concerned. I find that. As our position in the hu- as a hospitality, we're basically a private fundraising money for you guys. Um, I think we raised about a hundred thousand dollars last year for um, Park County Travel Council, um, the Scout Inn did. Um, I would like to have an opportunity to kinda see where that goes.
Thank you. Other questions?
Jake, I'm gonna ask you the same question. The, the former guy we interviewed is a, is a business owner as well. And you know, Cody's not a rumor mill. But how would you answer the question of somebody saying, you're strictly getting on this for your own personal gain because you're a business owner? How would you answer that?
You would say they're absolutely right. Um, I'm, I have, I have a lot to lose. Um, twenty twenty-two, when they were advertising that the Northeast Gate was closed, we lost forty percent of our bookings. Um, that was frustrating. There was some misinformation that went out and um. I, I, yeah, I'd say they're absolutely right and they have an opportunity to come and get on the board too, but I got a lot of skin in the game. Here, I got a lot of skin in the game in Powell. Um, I think uh, our, our, uh, yeah. Uh, uh, we are, we are ran by Yellowstone and that's no, we're not an oil town anymore. Um, we are a tourist town and uh, we need to capitalize on that and so yeah, I would say they're right.
Just sort of a follow-up to Commissioner Livingston, do you think that there's some untapped? Tourists out there, demographics, that maybe you can persuade to come to Park County? Do you think that the advertisement, the, the idea of what Travel Council has been doing? Um, maybe could, they could do more?
Um, I can tell you what we've been trying to do at our, at our hotel. Um, and what we've been trying to do is really getting our certain, our locals. Um, one thing that has been huge for us at our hotel and we've been doing greats for them is the ice climbers. Um, a lot of them are regional people. Um, they're from, you know, Montana, um, some from Green River. Um, those guys are the people that are feeding us in the winter. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that are coming up here and they're um, Nordic skiing. I was really surprised having the, having um, the uh, ski hill closed down this summer. I was, or this winter, I was really surprised on how many skiers are actually up there using that Nordic ski hill and coming to Cody, staying at our hotels. You know, from Billings and from um, you know, Caspers and uh, Riverton. Um, but, but staying here to, to recreate in the winter. Um, I think more, a, a little more regional approach, especially in the winter would be, would be really nice, so.
Madam Chair, I actually, thanks Jacob for applying, I, most of the, I didn't have an official question, um, but uh. And most of my ones that go through my head have been answered by you through other, other parts. And one of them was specific, do you have any specific issues with the, the spending of the current travel council? Um, but you can pretty much answer that, um, so, thanks for applying.
Yeah, thank you. And again, I, I, I wanna come in, I wanna listen, I wanna see what's, what is happening. Um, I do think that uh, new blood and a change of guard is uh, is necessary for um, any boards. Um, and just really committed to, to doing it and it's something I'm pretty passionate about.
Um, do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Okay. Unless there's any other questions, I think we've completed, so we'll let you know sometime today.
Thanks a lot guys, appreciate your time.
Thanks. That's the extent of the interviews that we have. We know there's one incumbent and two interviews that we've done today.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna comment on travel, that's only when I sat in on and I, to be honest with you, I think we have a couple of very good applicants. I don't have a beef with any of them or, or incumbent. Um, I guess it's just a matter of what, what you do want to move for. I don't think you could move, be bad with any of them, to be quite honest. I wasn't, he would have been my third choice, but he moved into first real quick and that was just his openness, straightforward discussion. And the fact that it, he's absolutely right, sometimes new ideas and shaking things up a little bit doesn't hurt. But I, on the other hand, I don't wanna, we have a very good incumbent that is putting in some time and I don't feel that he should be penalized. So I'm, I'm open for suggestions. That's where I stand.
I think there's a couple of things to look at here. I, I kinda like Craig, um, Kenyon, I think it's a different outlook. Um, very well presented and I, I think John's done a fantastic job, but I know we did renew, renew him a few years ago. Um, and so he's had a couple, a couple stints on it and, and, like I said, new blood doesn't hurt. I mean, it, it kind of opens up those discussions again, so I, I don't know, I'm kinda leaning toward Craig.
Madam Chair, be up and, and really, I, I like the idea that. They both, the interviews we had today both dealt with Cody and Powell. You know, cuz usually it's, Powell's just over there, you know, you don't have to worry about it, but Craig. Ran the chamber over there for a while and, and so I'm, you know, and, and of course, I've known Craig for quite a while. So that's, I would definitely lean toward him, but I thought that. Uh, Ivanoff had, had a lot of good points too, so I'll, I'll, I'll go along with anybody. I think we, I think we lucked out with two very good candidates. But as far as an incumbent being on there, they have put in the time and I, and I, and I, I've always. Hated the idea saying, thanks for your time, but we're replacing you, uh, when it's hard enough to get people to, to volunteer for a lot of these things, so. I certainly would support the incumbent on, but any of these two is, is good with me, so.
Yeah, and I'm sure I would say in hindsight, and I don't know, maybe we can still postpone this, but I wish we would have in this case. Uh, interviewed our incumbent simply because.
We can postpone.
Uh, just simply to put it straight towards you.
You wanna do that?
I wanna know, how you, how do you specifically feel?
We can get him in here. Okay. We have time. And we try to contact him?
Yeah, I, it, it wouldn't, Madam Chair, I agree, I agree with these guys, it's, it's uh. We got three really good ones and I think it's fair to uh, Mr. Parsons to bring him in for an interview.
Okay, we'll see if he can be available on the nineteenth.
I think it'd be appropriate.
All right, thank you. Anne, would you like to come forward? We're still running a little bit ahead of schedule, so we will keep moving here. Um, Anne Trasper, Powell Clark Forest Conservation District, uh, talking about the small acreage workshop. Yep, thank you. Are we, okay, are we changing the titles?
We're, we're, we're working on our large small acreage workshop. Uh, the last one we had was two years ago, we had about a hundred fifty people there come and go.
Can you hear me?
No.
Usually I can do radio broadcasts without the tower, so I try to be, I try to be a little quieter. The workshop's gonna be April sixth, uh, it's gonna be at the Fairgrounds in Powell. Uh, we've got a pretty nice agenda. This year, we're going to do something a little different on irrigation rights. I'm getting with Claudette Stroh and she's got a wealth of history. And we're going to do a brief history lesson, which might help put a, a little bit better perspective to people. When they get their water bill about why, how that came about. And uh, I, there's a lot of things that when she starts speaking at the Shoshone Irrigation District meeting that I didn't quite understand. And I thought, man, if I've been doing this, this long and I still have a good grasp on it, you can't expect a guy just walking into the county to have it figured out. So we're gonna be working a little bit with that way. Uh, we're also gonna be talking a little bit more about grazing management, weed management. And uh, we're gonna bring in an agronomist and start talking quite a bit more about alternative crop. Crops or if your ground is already torn up and full of weeds, what you might be able to plant for sustainable growth. Uh, we've gotten some really good luck with some of the small equipment dealers that have been buying equipment to manage small acreages. They thought we were nuts a couple of years ago when we recommended that we buy that. And some of the companies have bought, are on their second and third piece of equipment, they've been that busy. So the good news is we're starting to move in the right direction to get the right equipment on the ground. That's the good news. The bad news is it costs a lot to do this. So I'm asking for funds if you can find some to help us defray the cost of printing. And particularly the handouts, we want them to leave, leave their site, leave our site and our workshop with a good. Amount of information that if I need this information, this is who I talk to. And this is what I'm talking about, so again, they just kinda giving them a, a brief irrigation, small acreage one oh one. Learning manual in pieces. And probably what we'll use are our PowerPoint presentations with room for them to put their notes on there. And then we'll also have handouts, says, okay, you have a septic tank, this is who you wanna talk to. Here's the guy in the county, here are the people that actually do these, do these jobs, these are the, and here are your resources. And we're gonna go at resort, I talk big resource, topic resource, that kinda thing. So that's what we're after there. And then the last thing I wanted to say, and particularly to Lloyd, it's thank you so much for coming. And this is an invitation to all of you uh, to attend. It made a very healthy difference to have someone to come in and talk to you guys with someone that had been there. So it doesn't sound like I was just pie in the sky kind of a situation. But anyway, that's, that's what I'm after. I realized we've got a very short.
What kind of number are you talking about in the funds that you're requesting?
The last year, the last bigger, the last big one we did, um, the printing alone was twelve hundred dollars. And so I'm at, I, we, we were doing quite a bit, few things differently on the printing to bring the cost down. On the other side, the cost of some of the supplies have gone up, so we're asking for a thousand dollars if you can swing that. So it's me, printing and postage, we are gonna do, instead of doing a strict land mail. Uh, exposure, we're going to do an email blast first, see how many emails come back. That have expired and no longer there, or if we don't get the, get a pretty good response from the email blast, then we'll follow it up with the land mail. But we're, it's gonna be more selective instead of just running them up. And that should reduce some of the costs of printing the poster and it should reduce some of the cost of postage and that sort of thing. But we are trying to figure out ways, we are, like, there's gonna be someone getting on the radio. Um, we found that our newspaper ads, so a few people take the newspaper anymore. That they're not quite as effective as we would like to have. They work perfectly for legal notices and that sort of thing, they meet the letter of law. But they're not as good as get, about getting the word out as they used to be. So we are, that's what we're trying, are, are gonna be the email blasts and then uh, follow that up with land mail if we need to.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, Commissioners, I, I will say I did attend last year and I was thoroughly impressed. And thank you, Anne, for the, the Conservation District, as well as the other partners that put this on. Honestly, when I went in there, I thought it was not gonna be what it was and it was very well attended. A lot of very good questions from outside people that have recently moved into the, into the area. Um, I, I was, I was quite surprised.
Well, what I'm finding, I don't mean to interrupt, but what I'm finding is these people want the information.
Yeah.
And it's, what, what I'm hoping to do is two things, I'm hoping we can deliver the information. And then the other thing that we're going to try to do a little bit differently this year, as you. As our farm communities start to age and go out of business, we're starting to lose that sense of ag community. And so what I, what we're after this time is also the meet and greet. Uh, where we want, we're good, uh, the three of the banks in Powell are helping sponsor the lunch. Uh, we are gonna charge a five dollar registration fee to offset the rest of the lunch, so they have a little bit of skin in the game. But the other side of the coin is we're gonna try to get them to, over the lunch hour is the stand and mingle and go meet this guy. Here's the guy with Rhino Equipment, he's right over there, go meet him. Here's a table with so-and-so over there. If you have any questions, this is a great time to go visit and get the meet and greet, the, the handshaking happening. And hopefully, we might be able to get some of that even happening among the neighbors. Because what we're seeing with subdivision reviews is the neighbors don't even know each other. So that gets it to be a real hard. Thing to overcome, and if we could get them kinda just to relax a little bit and. And sit and visit with each other, that's all right.
Actually, if we further, um, I'm not sure how and where we could help, but um, one, one thought pops into my head is. Our account that we have and our budget for natural resources, I'm not sure if this could kinda. Be on the fence, because it truly does, they cover a lot of um. Public land issues as well. Uh, I'm just, I'm just throwing that as an idea, but anyway.
I did mention it yesterday on the morning show, uh, KPOW.
Thank you.
With Ross there. And just some little advice, you might get with them and, and try to schedule uh, it's free advertisement.
Absolutely.
Well, don't you think it'd be a sense of duty for a radio station to wanna help the community?
Pushing any business to my.
You know, I, I have. It, it, this is just, this is just a challenge. Oh, it really is, it's just a challenge. And you, you might go to state meetings or do this or do that and, you know, the funded districts, you go there and you talk to Teton County and it's, well. We just write the checks and off we go. What's left of our budget, it's just silly, you just do the best you can. But you, I, I don't want, I don't wanna put pressure on radio stations, but I, but I'll be glad to apply.
Uh, Madam Chair, um, Anne, just a question, what do you think the, the attendance was last year as far as like? Attendees and then, and then businesses or other entities that were there?
You know, I don't have a good feel for that because uh, Shoshone Irrigation District talked to all of the businesses. I know that Rhino Equipment was there in a big way, uh, the agencies that were there were reading past. I know that Rhino Equipment was there in a big way. Uh, the agencies that were there were reading past. Um, um. The irrigation districts put forth lots, conservation districts put forth lots. Um, but we're gonna have, uh, CB is going to be there this year. I think they were there two years ago. We tried to do one of these big ones every other year just because the amount of expense that it entails. And we figure about every other year, you essentially have time to get in another new crop of, of new people coming in. That have had enough time on the ground that they're ready to ask for help.
So, uh, follow up question, what about just attendees?
I think we had a hundred and forty-five. When I did the, the stuff that I did for the University of Wyoming. Uh, for their, for their paperwork, I think there was a hundred and forty-five attendees. But the other, and they stayed most, quite a few of them stayed most of the day. But one of the big reasons for that is the irrigation district had their water master class. As the very last topic on there. So there were a lot of people that stayed that were going to become subdivision water masters. And needed to have answers on, and needed to have questions and answers on that. So I don't know what we're going to have this year because we're not intending to throw that water matter faster class in there. I think each irrigation district is handling that themselves. Cause they're, that they're finding out it took a lot more time and had a lot more kinds of questions than.
I think it almost ought to be mandatory for anyone that submits in an irrigation district.
That's not right. Madam Chair, and that I want to follow up, just saying that a lot of what we do in development, these rules and, and, uh.
Processes.
Yeah, but, uh, the conditions that we apply are directly related of what they can be educated on at this, at this issue. Or at this workshop. So, you know, from irrigation to septic and everything. So, um, I, 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 I feel like we should somehow kick in and help a little. You, I would assume anyway that we are at very least pushing any rental for the being held at the Fairgrounds. You know?
I think that the irrigation district took care of that, and I think they got that for free.
I think so because of a government entity. I think they're fine.
I think they, I think they got that taken care of.
Um, I apologize. I didn't do the homework to figure out where this might be able to come out. Well, I didn't know the total amount, but where this might be able to come out of our budget. But I'm pretty sure we can find it somewhere for a thousand dollars. Okay.
Okay, we certainly appreciate your help. This is just.
Chair, just a, uh, just so sort of a follow up. It was last spring. I got a call at work from a guy who had just moved into the community and was asking how to turn on the headgate. I said, do not touch that until you go talk to somebody with a water desk. I think the information is certainly needed out there, especially with the.
Well, and one of the things that we, what, what we learned on our, our sister, our meeting two years ago. Instead of just saying headgate to all of us in this room, that makes a lot of sense. We're gonna have pictures. This is what a headgate looks like. This is its function. This is why it's here. And this is who is authorized to mess with this. The end.
Okay.
And then this is your system. This is your, you have your water master. His job is to make sure he's the contact that talks to this guy. But we're gonna, it's gonna be a little bit that way, but the thing I'm gonna do with Claudette is say, okay, a hundred years ago. When this is all sagebrush step. These people did this work and that dam happened. And these people paid for it, and that pay was attached to this land. And this is water right. And along with water right comes water responsibility and water bill. And you know, nothing's free. But that's what we're after.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve a thousand dollars to be, uh, spent on the small acreage or whatever.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve it for a thousand dollars for the, uh, rural living workshop. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? You want to oppose? Okay, motion passes. So we'll figure out how to get that to.
Okay, and then do you need, what do you need back from us? Do you need a accounting of our expenses and that sort of thing back to you? Okay, I appreciate you.
Yep.
Appreciate it, man.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Training.
Education, education.
We'll have a discussion later. We're, we're gonna find this, but we'll be okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, the last thing on our agenda today is basically a work session item. Um, and that is dealing with the Park County Clerk and e-poll books and precincts. So this is basically just an education session for us. There'll be no action. Okay. Our.
This guy's gonna ask.
County clerk in charge of.
Madam, Madam Chairman, I didn't, I didn't bring my, uh, my headgate key with me today, um, but tomorrow I'll.
Yeah, no.
So that I can take, take care of my own. That computer can get unplugged. Anthony, you can come plug that computer if you need that outlet.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
No, that's all right. We need to sign this, this is this morning's resolution. Just slide the table a hair if you need to. Okay, and thanks for the IT department to be here too. I know there's some issues and always, so thank you.
Madam Chairman, uh, Commissioners, thank you for the, the time today on your. Agenda for a little workshop and learning session. We'd like to just, um. Put some, put some things in front of you to, uh, think about for your May second or May second, April second meeting. Uh, where we'll be asking for action on, on several items that we're gonna go over now. Andrew, can I, how do I? And the remedial class.
I finally watched it on SBI. Or video. In fact, I missed several shots. But it was better than nothing.
On the radio.
Yeah.
I can broadcast. I got injured.
Was there any, uh, poor language?
No, that was close. How can I? Where do you want that to go?
You can minimize to get that to go away.
Oh, there you go. Perfect. All right. Now we're all set up. Thank you for your patience. Apologize for that, Madam Chairman. So Commissioners, um, first, I think we want to talk about, um, what we'd like to do with e-poll books. So electronic poll books, um. Katie, were you, no, you were gonna go with precincts. So electronic poll books are, are computers with our poll books on, right? Um, those, those electronic poll books are real time back to election central and connected to. Our statewide voter registration system. Our statewide voter registration system has every voter in the state that's been registered up to election day. And because they're real time, they will pick up election day registrations as well. So a new voter to Park County comes into the polling location on election day. They fill out a registration form. They take it up to the. The e-poll book and there'll be plenty of them at each one of our locations. But there, they will actually take the, um, the registration up. The election judge will enter them into the system. Make sure that they're not registered in another location in Park County. Make sure that they're not registered in another location within the state of Wyoming. Unfortunately, it doesn't check nationwide, but we don't think that there are busloads of people showing up in Park County from other states. So, um. But, uh, so the, that will show, um. Comit, Commissioner, uh, Stewart may not have changed his, his registration yet to Matiti. I don't know that. But if he went on election day, if he, if he were changes registration, he went in on election day. The election judge can then change his, his registration and they can look at it and go. Well, Commissioner Stewart, you already voted absentee in sixteen one one. And, and they will be able to see that at that point, and he will not be able to then vote in. Uh, in eight one, uh, which is Matiti upriver. And so it's a, we think that it's a integral piece of, uh, election integrity. That we will be able to utilize this as another stopgap in. In the integrity piece of elections where we will know. You know, a person moving here from Waske County. If, if they present to us in Waske County and they, and we pull up their information. It pops up and says, you're already registered in Waske County. Do you want to move them into Park County? Yes, we do. We'll be able to see though that they already voted absentee in Waske County. We could register them, but they would not get a ballot at the polling location. Currently, with paper poll books, we don't have that opportunity, right? Because we don't know. At like, out in the polling locations that, you know, that a person's moving from Waske County. We take them at their word. They've signed the. The affidavit that says, I am who I am. I, I'm eligible to vote. And they sign that swearing all those things in the oath. And, and then we would catch them on the backside without e-poll book. But it would be a week to three weeks down the road, depending on how many election day registrations we get. And enter into, um, the wireage system down the road. By that time, they've already cast their ballot, right? We've already certified the election. There's no going back to find that ballot. There's no going back to, to. You know, determine which ballot is theirs, pull it out and pull those votes out of that race that, so. Uh, so again, it's an election integrity piece, right? And so, uh. We would prosecute those people had they voted. We would turn that information over to the sheriff. The sheriff would, uh, investigate it and then. Turn that over, anything they find, if they find anything, then they would turn that over to the prosecutor and the prosecutor's office would take it on and prosecute them. But again, it's after the fact. So, just as a anecdotal piece, we are working very closely with the, um. With Secretary of State's office on this project. They, their, um, IT department is, uh, the ones that are, are trying to push this out. And, um, there are now, I think, I think there's five counties that are. Committed to e-poll books. Um, you know, as far as they can be committed right now, they may be in the same situation as us. We're coming to you today to. Talk to you, uh, not only about how e-poll books operate, but the budget piece as well. Um, and that's why IT is here with us to help us with their, with the budget numbers. But back to the Secretary of State's office has, they have sent us the, the latest MOU. There are very stringent conditions in the MOU that, um, IT is going to have to. Do certain things with the computers that are going out to our, our polling places. They're gonna need to be on a secure connection, um, and, uh. Things of that nature. There's logs that we need to keep for chain of custody. For transportation of these items out to our polling locations. There's a lot to it. Um, but we really feel like that, the, the opportunity to be able to. Have complete confidence on election day, that everybody that's registering that day is, is eligible. To, to the best of our knowledge and to the best of YO Reg's knowledge. We would hopefully, you know, we'll catch felons that are in-state felons that have not had their restri, rights restored yet. Um, you know, people coming from other counties, people who have already voted in absentee situations. We, we'll be able to see that on these, uh, computers in real time, uh. At, at our polling locations. Those, uh, computers will update every ninety seconds. So you couldn't, you couldn't vote here at the rec center and then hustle down to the, the auditorium. Cause you just can't make it in ninety seconds, right? Unless you're the flash like Commissioner Stewart and. And you get down there that quick. Um, so. If Commissioner Stewart voted at the rec center and then tried to go down to the, uh, the auditorium. Walked in, presented to vote, presented his ID, they bring him up, um. You've already, you've already voted. We can tell that. So, um. So that's, that's what EPBs are, um, and how they're utilized and the support that we have. They were first implemented in a test situation in twenty-two, uh, for the primary and the general election in. Fremont County, uh, Natrona County and Laramie County. So three very large counties, uh, Fremont County is similar to Park County as far as number of voters. Um, obviously, you're not gonna get any bigger than Natrona and Laramie County. They were successfully deployed in the primary in twenty-two. Fremont County had a little bit of a problem. So what had happened there was, at that time, the program was updating every ninety seconds. It was trying to update the entire log of what was going on every ninety seconds. And so it wasn't taking a ninety-second clip and uploading that to a database. It was uploading. The first ninety seconds, the second ninety seconds, so on. By the end of the day, they bogged down. And, um, they were able to go offline and they were able to continue using their, their poll books. In an offline situation, um, they just weren't getting that update. And for the general election, they solved that problem at the Secretary of State's office and with our vendor. And the vendor, uh, has now completely rectified that problem and, and now it's just updating. Pieces at a time that are collected throughout the day at a central location.
Do you think that this will have much of an effect on our judges' training?
Madam Chairman, thank you. I, um, I don't, I don't really think so because the ease of. Of use is. So user voter come up to me, you present your ID to me, which is state law now. Okay, so you have to present your ID to me anyway. You present your ID. I go in here and I click in your last name and I click overfield, or I type in overfield. And, okay, you're Dorothy. I'm an. Dossier on the ballot, Dorothy in the registration. So I, and then we go down through the, the, um, election judge goes through clicks, uh. Dossier overfield and then verifies that, are you still at lane forty-two? Uh, seven forty-two, lane forty-two, Cody, Wyoming. Yes, I am. You're still affiliated Republican or Democrat or unaffiliated or whatever. Yes, I am. Click vote. And once you, once the election judge clicks for you to vote. Then that prints out a, a Dymo label. And that Dymo label then has your name, your party affiliation and the election name on it. They tear that off, they hand that to you, you take that label then. They tear that off, they hand that to you, you take that label then over to the ballot table. The ballot judge will then look and see what that you're in, three-two, three-one.
She's right.
Three, three-one. Uh and they will then take your, take your label, give you a ballot for three-one. And then they take that label and they stick it in a book. And then at the end of the day, that's what they help, what helps them balance the books at the end of the day.
Madam Chair, but suppose Lloyd's out with his backhoe and he digs out the T-one trunk line for internet. Um is there, do we cancel election, postpone it? Or what do we do if there's no internet at that certain time?
No, sir. So that's, that's a good question for IT. But in the, in the interim between the time that the uh Commissioner Thiel digs up the T-one line. He better have good insurance, first of all. Second of all, uh he uh um we would go offline and work from the computer itself and the and the database on the computer itself. And we will also, as required by our uh MOU with Secretary of State's office. We will actually have a paper poll book at every location to back up uh the computers with.
Call before you dig.
Eight-one-one, sir.
Madam Chair, hands a couple of questions, going back to your original, your scenario here. Under currently, you fill out a form that says you're changing, that you're a new register. And they sign, they sign that correctly, correct? Under this system, if they come in, it's all done on the, you're entering the data, as said. What process would we have? There may still be people attempting to do this. So if they have assigned signature here, you did this. If you data, enter it, what, 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 how can we say that it was your fault, not our, our election judge people?
Right. Thank you, uh Madam Chairman, Commissioner Thiel. So thank you for the question. Um we will still, we will still have them sign.
They still will.
They will either present, they will either present a form that they've filled out. Yeah, from the election judges or from the registration table. Or we can get them registered right on the, on the system as well. If you're a new registrant, they can go in and they can click new registration. They type in all your information, they hit print. It prints out a a paper down here with the registration form that is exactly like what they would fill out on their own.
They're still.
Turn it around to him and sign it. And then the judge verifies their driver's license information as well.
A follow-up, um Madam Chair, at this point in time, it's not required, correct? The e-poll by Secretary of State.
That's correct.
Um second part is, has there been issues with uh double voting in in the state that we've caught that, you know, I know there's a a stopgap there. Um but two or three weeks later, have we had issues with this?
Madam Chairman, uh Commissioner Thiel, no. The the sen- the short and simple answer is no, that that's not, not been an issue. Felons voting in the past that believe they have had their rights restored or don't understand that their voting rights were taken away from them, that's happened. Uh I've had it happen.
This would catch that.
And this would catch that upfront, as long as their felony had taken place in the state of Wyoming. Obviously, they they were a felon from, you know, somewhere other than Wyoming and they moved here. And and they, again, either didn't realize that their their rights weren't restored in their home state. Or they hadn't taken the steps of getting their rights restored in Wyoming. Because that is something that actually has to happen, is they must have their rights restored in the state of Wyoming. And it'd be the same, same process as any felon that has uh has lost their voting rights. They have to go through the Department of Corrections and and there's a a full process. Department of Corrections determines whether their felony uh conviction has been far enough in the past. And that they've, they've paid their their debts to society, et cetera, before their rights restored. Once their rights are restored, we get a, we get a um a certificate from the Department of Corrections. If it was a Park County felony, we get a a certificate back from Park Department of Corrections also. That says, you know, uh Joe is lost or Joe's rights have been restored. Um and if they are, you know, they're on the up and up and they're ready, really truly ready to come and vote. They'll, they'll have that information with them. They give us those uh, they give us those certificates and then we go ahead and and get them registered. And even when they have their certificates, YO Reg, our voter registration system will still bring up. That, hey, they've had a felony in the past, has their rights been restored? And we look at the certificate, we compare all the information, date of birth, the name of the person. Um felony, where it happened, things of that nature, and make sure that that the certificate that they're presenting to us is is who they are and and matches the uh the felony that comes up on YO Reg.
Okay, um my last, this part question is uh this is, I'm not saying this isn't a good idea, but this makes a lot of sense and much more efficient. My question is, is because this is being pushed by our Secretary of State. Is there any discussion on backfilling the counties that volunteer to go along with his idea?
You're talking about the costs involved?
Yeah.
I ask. Ma- Madam Chairman, first of all, I would say, uh I I'd like to back up and say that the the secretary is supportive of the system, is not pushing the system. So they're not, he's not going out and saying, I want you all to to get on board with this. If you're ready as a county, both financially and as a, as an election uh as the chief election official of your county, then then we support you taking, taking on this, this project. I won't, I, I would be remiss in saying that the secretary is pushing this on us. That is not correct. Uh if I, and if I purported that, I apologize, is that, that's not, that's not correct. Your, to your, to your question and to your point, Commissioner Thiel, no, there is no talk of backfill.
Okay. Well, my, my only concern here is, and this is not specifically me saying, I can just hear my, my ears ringing. Is why are we looking for a solution to the problem that doesn't exist? To spend our tax-earned money. That's all I'm saying.
Um IT can get into this a little more. We had a a quick work session last week just to find out a little bit about the topic and how much time we need today. But there is some, some thought processes over, even though it does sound, and I'm not saying pro or con, but even though it sounds like a large amount of money. The equipment that is being bought for this can be used in a lot of other instances throughout the county in the eighteen, twenty months that it's not being used for this scenario. When we're talking laptops and things like that. So there is an offside to to maybe the ability and IT can explain that a little bit more, I think, and some of the discussion that we've had. So wherever you want to go next is fine.
Okay, um one, one more Katie just brought up and it was something, uh Madam Chairman, sorry. Um one thing that I failed to mention is that we do really believe that this is going to decrease lines and make us much more efficient. Rather than having two election judges with paper poll books at the, at at the table and flipping through, as Commissioner Thiel has worked at our elections. Um he understands quite, quite well how how inefficient that it could be to be flipping through pages and pages of voters looking for the right person. You know, we try and tab them so that, you know, you you can go straight to the Ts to find Thiel, et cetera. But it's still, it, we feel that it'll be much more efficient. And rather than having two paper poll books, so if Katie and I are election judges and and there's one line at Ralston or Heart Mountain um or at uh Garland, Matitzi, et cetera. Um instead of having two pool books and we each have to mark the same one and get the same number. We would have two computers rather than that. And one computer, you could come up and I could be, I could be registering you while Commissioner Livingston comes up to Katie and checks in, gets his ticket and keeps on going. This line could be, keep, you know, keep moving and and, you know, while I'm getting this, getting the new registration put in. So we we really feel the efficiency at our polling locations will be greater as well.
Okay, Madam Chair, Madam Chair. Um YO Reg will all show their birth dates. So when we have two with the same identical name, we can check their birth dates, make sure we picked the right voter. So there's some really good efficiencies in using this as well.
Yeah.
That was one spot that I noticed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll really help the junior, senior situation or or, you know, maybe a middle name. They, they, maybe they haven't given us their full middle name. And so we have George P. Young and George P. Young, but one's Paul and one's Peter. And and so we'll be able to say, well, you know, you don't look like you were born in nineteen eighty-six.
To that, okay.
Cause I know he graduated about then. Uh so I I'd like to now invite the IT guys up. And we have a a quick discussion about what we think that, um what the cost. Um, cost might be on these. Um what we're, what we're thinking is, so I've got a little spreadsheet here. This part of the spreadsheet here shows which polling location is. So Clark, Mountain View, Garland, Powell, Wapiti, Southport, Fire Hall, uh Matitzi, Cody Rec and the Auditorium. All right, we've got nine polling locations, um and this is a percentage of voters at each one of those locations. Uh this is the number of carts and computers that we believe we'll need uh for election day. So thirty-five, thirty-five total, uh eight at our two big locations. Six at the rec center and then two or three at uh Southport Fire Hall and two everywhere else. Um you, you can kind of see how that breakdown goes here as far as the percentage of voters versus how many of those machines we'd like to have at each one of the the um locations. Cost per cart, I think there's a little bit of an update on that. And uh and I'll let IT address that. But right now, or my last figure was about twelve hundred, say thirteen hundred a cart. Um and and then uh some spares. And then online support or I on onsite support, the Secretary of State is uh mandating that we have onsite support from the vendor um here in Park County for both election days. So there again, that's uh that's a secretary, that's, that is a mandate. Um as as stated in the MOU. And uh that, that onsite support's about sixty-six hundred.
And that's a representative, excuse me, that's a representative from YO Reg, right?
That is, yeah, from the vendor that that uh uh programs YO Reg for us. So um that, that fifty-seven thousand number is about what we, you know, that was again, we have a uh some updates from IT um that I'll let them uh go over with you. But that's kind of the number we came up with to begin with. Um and a lot of that, again, a lot of this uh these items, uh the cart will be able to reuse every election. That's, we won't have to buy new carts every election. Um we won't have to buy new monitor mounts. The Dymo label printers are pretty, they're, they're workhorses. They, they should last us several, three or four elections, I suspect. Um and some of this stuff, some of these items, the uh the IT folks will be able to to filter into the rest of the county is, you know, we won't need them for another twenty-two months, twenty-four months. Twenty, yeah, twenty-two months-ish. Um until the next uh primary election after the general election is over. So um again, yes, I'll uh, I'll I'll get, I'll get, I'll give into uh IT, I think I've talked enough for for now, you're gonna, I will be back.
Okay, that's a warning.
Yeah.
We probably need the mic with Mike's voice. Yes.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, yeah, well, we kind of got dragged into this. Pretty wild. Um I guess we'll talk a little bit about the cost involved in it here. Uh again, he did a pretty good job of labeling out with probably on his, I guess he can use his computer.
Yeah.
Around a little bit. But the upper screen up there, I guess we can slide it up a little bit. And then um I'm sure the cost of each of the election card and stuff like that, those are mixed costs. A lot of the cost down there where it says NE on the left side, that's stuff we've got on hand at the time. So like, and there's some fairly big expenditures like the PCs and stuff like that. Those are things we buy every year. So we have a supply kind of stock, it's recycling things out. And so there's a window in there for us to use those computers before we put them into permanent use in the county. So and that makes things quite a bit cheaper that way because we gotta buy them anyway. So we'll just use them for the election when they're clean and nice and happy and then uh turn them loose in the county after that. Um other costs are, like he said, there's the cards and the odds and stuff that it'll be there and uh some of the printers and things like that. So um when we got done figuring it out, it worked out to be about and that number's just a little bit off right now.
Yeah, we had.
Some things in, we had a couple of things that were missing. We were looking at this, it looks like the cost per cart with the computer and everything it needs is twelve seventy-nine right now. And so and a lot of this stuff, it's just the first time cost to get it all set up. So like the carts and printers and UPS units and stuff like that. So a lot of that stuff will just be sitting there waiting for the next election to come along. And that's okay, cause it'll last for quite a while. Uh computers, we like to cycle them out because they're just, it's newer technology and whatnot, so we can do that as we get new machines, put them in there, take them out when they're done, stuff like that. Um there's some, after the elections. There are some things we'll have to stock here and there, and that's what the second one down there is, following the elections, we've got the uh UPS batteries, the toner cartridges, the Dymo labels, that kind of stuff. It's, those are pretty minimal costs as you keep going through it. And when we take those numbers and start multiplying them out, that's when the numbers start stacking up here. Might not have. These are a little bit, little bit short, the real number there for all those is about forty-four thousand. Some things we had to add, update that. There. Still. Um it's close.
Yeah, it's, they're big numbers, so it's. Yes, copy, copy that. And just copy, just copy, double click out. And click in that cell. Copy that cell. Okay, you want that?
As they're figuring that out, basically it boils down to, you're gonna need thirty-five computer setups with six spares. And um yeah, oh. And that number, when it's all done, we have the onsite support and whatnot is uh fifteen thousand seven twenty-seven. That, what that doesn't include is the internet. And yeah, Andrew's gonna try and get that up there for you. Anyway, in almost all locations, we've got internet services that are willing just to let us have and use it, so it doesn't cost anything. But we've got some odd locations, one of them in particular is that Mountain View uh polling place at South near Ralston. There's nothing out there. Uh TCT doesn't have coverage, there's nothing there at all. We entertain the idea of using cellphone coverage, but cellphone is inherently unreliable for that kind of stuff. Especially if you need kind of data speeds and stuff like that, so we probably have to look at a satellite link to do it there. And bottom line with satellite stuff is upfront, it'd probably be about five. And bottom line with satellite stuff is upfront, it'd probably be about five grand just for that one location, per location like that. Like, is there a way to do a? A hybrid, does it have to be all? Or can we go like at Mountain View to? Go back to the two paper things. Um, for the rest of us, that's fine, or. Can we move that mountain view location?
You can do that, okay, but I mean, if we. Instead of spending five thousand dollars on just getting the internet set up, just use the old one till the internet is updated some year.
Sure, and that that's one way of doing it. Hybrids, I'm not certain. Okay, we can certainly address the idea in some of the smaller polling places, maybe that's the way to do it. Uh, and and not do it and just finally wait until the internet's available everywhere. And even though it's available with a satellite, it gets pretty pricey. There was some talk about the satellite systems and. You have to purchase them, you can't lease them, which is really ridiculous in my mind, but that's how they make their money, I guess. So uh. One, one thing you could consider is once, uh. Once you had a satellite system, you bought it outright, you could use it for other things after the fact. Uh, one of the things I think of is our local command post or something. We have a forest fire or whatever like that, you get it out in the field and things like that. Uh, so there's things like that that could be used as an offset to that cost too, because I know there are times they do want service out. And it will nowhere and you can't get it, but. It's pricey, it was a hard one to swallow and we called and talked to him about it. We got a couple questionable locations or theory, not hearing back from yet, the Clark. Location, we're not, we haven't got verification, the speeds they got there and stuff, so it's not fast enough to be in a location, we might need a satellite. Um, the, for some reason, a lot of these schools doesn't want to talk to us, but they're, um. We're still after them trying to figure out what their numbers are, how fast, what bandwidth, there's stuff like that, but it could be another possible location. The all the other locations seem like they're okay, and it'll be basically free for us except for things we have to buy that. Make sure it's secure up to the state standards. So, oh, pause there for any questions. Was Andrew something they had that I forgot?
No, I think our, as far as I know, our main question will be, you know, can we, um, you know, and how much it's gonna take and you've kind of covered that, so. We just have to decide, once you get answers to those questions, I mean, if we're throwing more and more locations in that. Might get more expensive, then we need to look at that, but if Clark and Wapiti turn out okay, then we may not have to add anymore there.
Right, we we took some guesses out of here, like I say, we're we're looking at. Not counting the internet, we're looking at fifty eight thousand seven twenty seven, that's for all the equipment. And then the internet would be on top of that, and we say most places are free. Five grand for the. For the ones that would need satellite, if we wanted to do that, and. If we were to do that with just one site, we're already at about sixty five thousand, so. But it's a fair sum of money. Again, that's kind of a one-time cost upfront. If we do satellite stuff or not, like I say, hybrid might be a workable situation.
One of the things we talked about in our quick work session was that funding and and the location of that funding in the county budget, if it was. To be looked at, to be approved, and um, my understanding is there's some sharing between electra, elections and I T.
Andrew working this more than I did, maybe I'll have him speak to that just a little bit.
Yeah, so we've left off. The cost of stuff that would come out of the I T budget. We'll put that as N A, that stuff that is. We either already have in stock, like keyboards and mice. Or it's the PCs that we'd be purchasing to deploy that year, but first we would use them on the election cards and then after election would pull them off and. And use them. Um, so we don't, uh, the only numbers on here that would be something that might get used somewhere else would be like the satellite equipment.
Okay.
So the satellite equipment, like Mike was saying, there'd be the high initial purchase of the satellite equipment. But then, um, there's only a monthly charge to actually use it. And that's only charged for, we'd only be charged for August. And November.
Okay, so we're kind of looking at the fifty eight, seven twenty seven coming from elections and I T additions on there could be, could be I T.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then the the follow or, you know, the following years, we'd only be paying for upkeep as far as consumables on the carts. And then internet service. So like you paid five thousand for the satellite. Location, the following years you'd only be paying between two and four hundred dollars a month for the the service fee.
Madam Chair, I I'm assuming we're here today discussing this simply because of these things, if we choose to move forward, we'd need to be. Put in this year's budget, which would most likely require a budget amendment in the elections part. Okay, even though they're not going to be used until next year, otherwise you'd have been here, we'd be discussing this in May instead of March. Just following where we're going with this.
Right, as a, as a tiny issue, trying to get. You know, the, you know. As uh, Mike and and Andrew have both told us, you know. We don't know the availability of some items, uh, they might be a little longer lead time. And so we, we kind of need to know. Sooner than later, if this is something than the that the commissioners will support. And and support that, uh, that, uh, line item, uh. That the budget amendment for the elections.
Understood.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we can't wait till July eighteenth, having approved budget in order at that time for an.
That's what I was assuming we were going, so with along those lines, have you considered what, I don't have your budget in front of me, I'm assuming you know more about it than I do. You shouldn't say that, but I did. Um, where is there any in your budget to help cover some of these costs already?
Madam Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Field, no. The we, in in an off-election year, we have a pretty bare bones budget.
I know you do.
And, you know, that. We've done that for transparency purposes, because without an election, shouldn't be over but over budgeting a department. You know, because just to make it not fluctuate, because, you know. So, so they, the, the straightforward answer is.
No, good, all right, that's fine. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, it might be we're checking with the the sheriff's office. I thought just before I left, we bought some kind of satellite unit. It just seemed like we bought something.
Well, it's worth asking, I guess.
Worth asking, I haven't seen anything or heard anything about it, usually they drop it on us.
And maybe, maybe it didn't quite get done, I don't know, but that's something we're checking into.
I'm fine, just thinking maybe there was Sheriff Graff that was going on back then, so you know, you got a new sheriff, so.
Okay, we'll keep going with the discussion. Okay, so thought processes, we'll digest some of this when it comes to the poll books and talk about it the nineteenth. Does that work? That works for you hands, right?
Okay, so. So we would put that on the agenda for the nineteenth, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
As far as the budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Up or down, yep.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So, uh.
You know, just something to keep in mind, Hans. Is uh, out there Wapiti at the school. We're doing a uh, a uh, active shooter thing with training with the school kids out there and the teachers. And they were talking about not having any cell coverage if something went bad. And one of the students said, if you go out there and stand up on the big slide, you can get some.
Okay, the other thing, the other thing today was to look at a little bit and give us a brief on what's going on with the precincts. I have had a few questions from. Community members that have heard that there could be some changes, so we'll just get an overview.
Very good, thank you, Madam Chairman. We appreciate the conversation with the poll book uh, situation. That was uh, really good. To uh, Commissioner Stewart's um, uh, point there. Um, Homeland Security Jeff Martin has been, has gone with us out just for your edification, just briefly. He's gone with us, we've gone to all of our polling locations now, and he's done an assessment of all of our polling locations. Is putting together escape plans, um, looking at whether or not there's an A E D there. He's looking at it from a, a, a homeland securities perspective. And a, and a law enforcement perspective as to, um, what kind of security, what kind of escape routes, et cetera, are at our polling locations. We're extremely appreciative of what he's doing for us and and thanks to the commissioners for. Uh, allowing him to do his job. We appreciate that very much. So, um, so we'll go to precinct consolidations. And uh, um, Katie Johnson will kind of lead that discussion for us. I'm gonna bring up some maps. Um, if I can find. Let's see.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, so first off, I'd like to make it clear that. We are talking about consolidating some precincts. We are not going through the process of redistricting. That was last election cycle. We are not. You know, taking a population from here and putting it over to here to get the numbers to readjust. That is not what we are going through right now. However, there have been some changes to take note of. Those are primarily coming from both the city of Cody and Powell. Did agree to reapportion their city wards, so we are gonna see some changes in the uh, boundaries there. And this is going to result in us proposing some consolidations throughout the county. Um, and so our election districts and precincts are. By law, they need to line up. We can't just draw the lines willy nilly. They have to consolidate and follow municipalities. And follow municipalities ward lines that have been set. So from that perspective and to be uniform, we would like to seek to have one precinct. Per city ward now. And if you pull up the map, map server where we're at right now. So in the city of Cody, just anecdotally, you can see where all of these colors are. And it's a little bit of a rainbow right now, and so we would like to consolidate that because a lot of. You know, primarily in where Hans's mouse is right now, those two uh, precincts, they see the exact same ballot style right now. And so there is, in some of these areas, there is absolutely no reason for us to be creating two ballot styles. For each voter to, you get two one and you get two two, even though they are the exact same. And we see that essentially throughout the municipalities here, and if you'd go to the new ward for Cody. And so what Cody has done in their reapportionment is, you know, we go one, two, three, as you can clearly see, but it's just the colors. And so we would like to mirror that, and so this green one, that will be two, two. Will now merge into two, one, and that will be the entirety of uh, Cody Ward one. In the yellow area. Precincts twenty four, two and twenty four, three will merge into twenty four, one, one, and that will follow the boundary of Ward two. And then in the purple area, twenty five, two and twenty five, three will merge into twenty five, one, and that will be the boundary of Ward three.
You can kind of see here where, where those different colors are at. Those are all the the different ballot styles. That we'd like to consolidate. Two or six. Eight, eight ballot styles into three. Those three.
Okay.
Basically. Making it simpler for our judges.
I may be jumping the gun here on your discussion a little bit, but that also changes precinct represented, representation. Um, so with precinct people and, okay.
As we'll get into that here in just a little bit.
And essentially, we'd be following that same logic over in the Powell area of having one precinct per city board. And this already is the case in nine, seven, nine, seven already is the entirety of Ward three. And so what we would do to combine these precincts is that nine, two would merge into nine, one. Up top, and that would be the boundary of Ward one. And then for Ward two, nine, four would merge into nine, five.
So that's what that would look like then, Ward three, one and two.
I was seeing just a question, but the seats that are currently on the city councils. Are done by wards, correct?
That's correct.
So. What's the timing on how this take affects and what happens through elections? Do we do it through attrition as we move forward? I mean, people stay that.
There's no, no seats will be affected.
Okay.
There, they all live, they all live within the the boundaries of.
One you're doing, okay.
Uh, in both, in both Cody and Powell.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Does that affect in any way, shape or form like the precinct people?
We'll get to that here, um, directly, it seems to be.
We can jump to it now, because the, because the second set of changes and consolidations that we're talking about will be about splits. And that is not how precinct committee um, seat allocation is done. Uh, seat allocation is done at the precinct level, so we can go ahead and jump to that.
You wanna, you wanna jump to this here? So.
No, to the. Yes, exactly. And so. With precinct calculations. The greatest impact in the seat allocation will come from the change in which we are calculating them. So last election cycle, it being a redistricting year, we had to go off of a calculation where it was. Um, based off of total number of registered voters in that precinct. Whereas moving forward, we will go back to the tradition, well, the regular, um. calculation in which it is based off of the uh, voter turnout per that party's representative for U S Congress. So based off of the votes cast for that race. So that, so from just that change in the way that we are required to calculate. The Republican Party will see a fifteen seat decrease. From the changes.
If we make no changes. There will be fifteen seats, fifteen pair.
Yes, fifteen seat pairs.
Fifteen, fifteen pair that would be reduced. If we don't make, if if you don't approve any of these changes, fifteen seats on the, on the central committee will go away.
Fifteen pairs.
That, so that's reflective in this side here. Where they will go, go down to forty three. From what was fifty eight, so there are fifty eight pair after redistricting. Because of the difference in statute and how you determine the number of pair. After redistricting versus how you determine it. And once redistricting is in the past, and now you're determining based on number of votes for your party's representative in Congress. So.
That will be driving the seat loss. The precinct consolidations that we're proposing. Will only create one seat pair loss in the Powell area. That will come from the nine, one, nine, two consolidation. So they will lose one committee man and one committee woman from the Powell area. Everything else does not impact because what we would do is essentially we will bind. When we combine these precincts, we're combining their vote totals. So. All, so essentially, all of them already have that vote turnout and that population there to make that. It make their seats hold, make their numbers consistent.
These are the calculations, and so the statute says that you give one pair for every two hundred and fifty votes or major fraction thereof. So anything over one point five gets a second pair. So in my, in our uh, calculations here, you'll see like this uh, in Clark. Is one point four, they give one pair. If they move to uh, one point five, one, they would get two pair. Cause it's a major fraction thereof. Um, so here in two, two, they're gonna get five pair. Whereas before, uh, yeah, they were five pair in two, one and two, two to begin with. So you can see over here with that. There was uh, three, three and two, two, and now we moved two, two into two, one. And they still get five pair in that precinct.
Okay.
So. There, as you, as you go down through here, you can see some fluctuation, you know, where it's plus two, minus two. Uh, zero change in. Uh zero change in, you know, here, but a minus one, minus one, plus one. Um so there are just some fluctuation throughout, but in the end, there's a minus one um. Uh variation overall in number of pair uh for the Republicans. The Democrats, the Democrats makes a big difference, um cause they'll go from twenty-nine, because they have such low numbers. They don't have more than one pair in any of their precincts. Even with combining, they still don't have enough votes for a second pair in any one of their precincts. And so they'll go from twenty-nine pair to twenty-two pair. Which uh frankly, they have a difficult time in filling. Uh a third of their, a third of their seats to begin with, so.
Now, does this change every two years?
So yes, uh Madam Chairman, uh Commissioner Mangle, yes, it it we. So that's. Okay, so that, so what we will be asking um when, when uh we come back. In um. In April, we'd like to get it back on your agenda for April second. Um we understand that that hopefully on the nineteenth, you will consider the budget piece. So that we can move, either move forward or drop EPVs, um and you know. Again, you guys hold the purse strings on that. Uh the clerk holds the, the decision on whether to use them or not, but obviously. Kind of, it's, it's a chicken and egg thing and and uh, you know, we're not gonna hatch any. We're not gonna hatch any chickens without the egg, the golden egg that the commissioners hold. Um so, uh so what we will come back on April second for is the precinct uh changes in the boundaries. Um and we'll need to make notice to the uh to the parties. And we'll notice that in the paper, that will be a public hearing. Um so uh that, again, precinct changes regardless of EPVs. Is something that we would like to, we'd like to, to, to take serious consideration of. Um we really believe that that's a, that's a piece that will help our judges at the local level, at the precinct level. By reducing the number of uh ballot faces that they have. And uh to choose from when, when you go up to the ballot table. Fewer is better in that case, trust me, so um just trust me. My apologies.
Great government statement.
Yeah, sorry for that statement, that is not, not appropriate, I apologize. Um so the boundary changes, again, we'll notice the pa- in the paper, notice the parties committee numbers. We'll have uh approval there for you as well, um per statute. Um and then it uh twenty-two, eleven, one, oh, two, that's the, that's the tabulators. Um and we're going to request that, that again, you approve as a commissioners. Um the only, of the only system that's available to be approved in, in Wyoming, which is the SNS. Um and then alleged, election judges pay. Uh Colleen and Katie will come to with uh with a proposal on election judges pay for this uh. Uh election cycle, and then um the cha- we, we have one, one change in a polling location that we'd like to make. And it's, it's very minimal impact, it's in Crandall, so Crandall is uh, is District eleven, precinct two. And there's seventy, I think there's seventy-two voters in the Crandall sunlight area. They do not have currently a uh polling location in Crandall, well, this. I mean, frankly, it's because the low numbers and um the location and the difficulty that could be getting there in November. August probably is not gonna be an issue, but in November, we may have problems getting there and back. Uh with treacherous roads, et cetera, so. What is currently happening with eleven, two right now is that we send the voters in eleven, two. A letter that says your polling location currently is the courthouse. If you want to vote on election day in person, you have to come to the courthouse and, and vote there. We also send them in that same letter, a absentee request. And, and say, here's an alternative, if you don't want to vote in, in person on election day and drive all the way into town. We understand. Um so uh the majority of those people do that, in fact, in twenty-two. Uh uh there, we had uh sixty-four voters out of the seventy-two. Uh total registered, uh fifty-eight of them voted absentee and six voted in person at the courthouse. What we would like to do is, um because we're doing the, or, so if we do the E poll books. We would like to move their polling location up to the rec center. There would be a three-quarter of a mile change in their polling location. We would put them at the rec center, and then those si- six voters would go and vote with the rest of their constituents at the, at the rec center rather than. Um at the courthouse, really is a minimal change, um I would bet that it will not. Impact the way most of those voters have voted in twenty-two, or that the way they have voted in the past. Which is very consistent in that they vote absentee um nine times out of ten. So we will come to you, uh and that again, that'll be noticed in the paper, because it's a polling location change. And the parties also will be noticed on that as well.
Hands, in the past, we've been able to go in and vote somewhere in up to thirty-five, thirty days ahead in the elections office.
That's correct.
That's still gonna happen.
Madam Chairman, that's correct, yes, and that will still be the case, it's twenty, so the, the timeframe for absentees. Has reduced, the legislature took the timeframe from forty-five days down to twenty-eight days. So we will not be sending out uh absentees as soon as we have in the past. So there is a little quicker turnaround time on, on that part. Um so uh we don't anticipate that that's going to be a huge problem uh for voters. Think that twenty-eight days is probably not a bad, um you know, it's not a bad timeframe. Uh forty-five days is great, it, we didn't have, we didn't have a problem with forty-five days either, um.
Did you have a question?
Well, yeah, come on, and we're following that, but the, the, the letter and the absentee request can still be up. Way ahead of that, they just have to respond in a short time, so, and that's out of our control. So back to the polling change, um um if it comes up, why?
Madam Chairman, so it, it just seemed, you know, after discussions Katie and I have had, and we've had the discussion with Colleen. We, we kind of asked ourselves, why has it been like this in the past? Why did they choose to put them at the courthouse and not at Clark or not at the rec center? And you look around the, around Cody and the, with the exception of uh, you know, of Clark and South Fork. And Wapiti, the external areas of Cody go to the rec center. And it, and we just kind of asked ourselves. Why do we have them come here when we have a polling location already set up at the rec center? We have election judges there, and there's so few that vote in person that. Why don't we just combine that and then, and then we don't have to call the courthouse a, a polling place? And um and then it.
The courthouse is not a polling location.
Exactly. Yeah, it. It's, it's an absentee, it's an absentee and early polling location? We don't think that really in looking, relooking at this, we'd never really questioned ourselves on it. And but relooking at it, is the courthouse really a good place for a polling location on election day? Eh, probably not. Um it, so I'll, I'll give you another example of, of that is uh Yellowstone. So Yellowstone, anybody that resides in Yellowstone, their polling location is at Wapiti School. We send them the same kind of letter that we send to the people in eleven, two and Crandall. We send them and says, hey, your polling location is at Wapiti, if you wanna drive all the way down here, you're sure welcome to. Otherwise, here's an absentee request. Um obviously, in November, the road, the road could be closed to Wapiti by then, is likely to be closed to Wapiti by then. And they would then have to come all the way around and vote at Wapiti.
They are officially closing it on October thirty-first every day now, every year now.
Every year now, so they would not, they would be able to drive in for August, the August election, but not the uh general election.
Madam Chair, uh kind of along those lines. Maybe that one should be changed to the rec center as well, just simply because if they do. Any voters in Yellowstone are gonna be in Mammoth area, and they're gonna have to come through Cook City, if the road is open, it's gonna be. The, you know, the, the, the plug, and they're gonna have to come out, and they're not gonna wanna come to Cody and then drive all the damn way up Wapiti. So to me, that even makes more sense, but um the only question of the change on the sunlight Crandall was. Fact that people just don't like change, even if it is only six people, but the fact that you, you're actually putting them in a specific. In a polling place where prior to that they weren't, so I understand, I think that's easily justified, but I seriously think that you may wanna look at. I don't know how, what your numbers are that come out of Yellowstone, but that does not make any sense, especially knowing. That the East Gate is gonna be closed prior to election, especially in the, in November.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Thiel, uh I can't remember an election when we had someone from Yellowstone actually poll at their polling location. They're, they're exclusively absentee. But I, I, I appreciate your comments and will take them, take them seriously, of course.
Madam Chair, if, if the Yellowstone crowd comes out, can we also have um producer license plate?
That's a time for a different discussion. Sir?
Um Madam Chairman, I, I think uh we've, we've dug into your lunchtime and I apologize for that, um but I. Do we have anything further?
Um if you'd want to listen about the split changes, you can, but.
Oh.
I, I think we're okay.
Yeah, the, the split changes are not something that necessarily, they don't impact boundary lines. So all we're doing there is, and so let's just say that ten, one. Has ten, one, one, ten, one, two, ten, one, three, we're gonna, we're able now to combine ten, one, one with ten, one, three. So we'll combine, we'll go from three ballots in ten, one down to two. So there's some, some changes there, they have no effect on boundary lines, and they have no effect on. Uh precinct committee people.
So you're not changing representation whatsoever.
There will not be any, any difference in representation there, so.
So right now, we have you coming back on March nineteenth to have a discussion, possible action on E poll books. And we have you on April second for precinct changes and boundaries.
Uh and tabulators.
And tabulators.
And election judge pay.
Want that on April second, too?
That's all.
Okay.
It all has been a public hearing. So we can advertise, Molly will need a time.
April second, okay, we'll work on that.
Uh I'll, I'll, Katie and I will work with Molly on what we need.
Okay, time wise.
Time wise and um whether or not we need separate hearings for. I, I think we're gonna need separate hearings for boundary changes. And for the change in the location of eleven, two.
Okay, well, you guys take a look at that and let her know and figure out how the agenda needs to sort out.
And then, many, or the uh, the, the committee numbers would be an action item. Tabulators would be an action item, and election judge pay would just be an action item, all just motions on your part. Either positive or negative. Thank you for your consideration.
Madam Chair, just one more thing, uh when you come before uh uh the budget item, if you would. Come back with a hybrid too, that we eliminate the satellite uh hookups, cause that seems like a huge lot of, amount of money for. For a small number of people, and if we can do a hybrid, uh if we could have a couple different numbers. On, on, what you, you could request, so.
Madam Chair, we can do that, thank you.
Thanks, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Move to adjourn.
All those in favor? Um yes, if you need discussion on a journey.
Did you decide on?
Oh, we can't tell you.
You weren't here, I know I wasn't.
I didn't know if you were gonna discuss the board appointments later.
No, we did it.
Do you have his number?
I think Molly has his number, we won't, we'll let Molly let him know. I have a move in a second, I just need a vote, all those in favor?